Hello everyone, welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Kilwine. Hey guys.
Good morning.
We also have Jessica and Colin from our team. Hello. And then we have a very special guest today. You guys, you may recognize her from a previous work session. You may be very, very excited to hear from her. If you don't know, you should. We have retired pastor Paula Behrens with us as well. Hi Paula.
Hi.
We're so excited to have you here today. This is a very exciting topic. I think ever since I first found out about the success story that Paula had, when it was just a baby success story a while back, I've been so excited for her to be able to put together something to bring to you guys to really break down how she's been able to achieve this really extraordinary thing. I think it's pretty awesome. And so we're going to get into that today. First, a little bit of housekeeping. Let us know in the chat, where are you? Is it sunny where you are today? Is it, is it beautiful? Is it cold? Where in the world are you and what are you excited to learn about today? So come on over to the chat, introduce yourself. We are thrilled to have you here. This is a live session that we hold every week on Zoom for Team YL. We are Get Oiling. We are a software platform to serve your young living business, but you don't have to be a Get Oiling member yet to join and benefit from these calls that we do every week. You can sign up to attend these live at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And we also have our YouTube channel where you will find most of these replays. That is youtube.com/getoiling. So let's see where everybody is coming in from. We've got Minneapolis, Kansas City, Buffalo, Brisk37, hey, it's 50 and the Catskills. I have hope for you Amanda. We've got Hudson Valley, Lisa, we got the same weather, Kansas, Wyoming, Calgary, sunny South Florida, we are so jealous, Missouri, Syracuse, South Dakota, Philly, we got like big New York day here. What's up y'all? All right, so we are really thrilled to have you here and today we've got a fun topic to share. So I'm going to switch over to speaker view here. If you guys came, by the way, if you came here with a need for help today, if you need help with your business, if you need a look at what you're working on, we can make sure that we reserve space for you on an upcoming call like this one. If you go to getoiling.com/websitereview, all one word. And if you're here today and you need to ask a question, even if it doesn't pertain specifically to what we're talking about here, please, please put that in the Q and A. We're here to help you on this call. Our team is here to help you if you've got questions. So make sure that you go ahead and do that and, and then we'll get on with the show here. And of course, if there's anything that you need to see at the close of our presentation here with Paula today, we will make that time for you. So switch over to speaker view. So today we're going to be chatting with Pastor Paula, who is one of my favorite people because she is, oh, you're, well, you're going to find out why in just a few minutes. But Paula has been creating some really beautiful resources for her own use and then also sharing those resources with our oily community, things that are gorgeous that plug straight into your Get Oiling website. I want to show you really quick where you can find Paula's and other, other resources on our website and that is on our marketplace page. So I'm going to show you just real quick and then I want to actually like go and like, I want to give this over to Paula so that we can really get into the story that you guys came here for today. So real quick screen share, if you go to our Get Oiling website and you go over here to FAQ, you'll find our partners and marketplace. You can also just go to getoiling.com/marketplace. First you'll see our content partners. These are people who create new things every month that, that plug into your system. But then we've got courses and programs done for you systems. And Paula is right here, beautiful pages and boy, are they beautiful. So you can come right over here and click beautiful pages. Paula has, I want to say, yeah, five different programs and courses that she offers to our community. Everything from custom homepages, pre-built funnels, all the way through to a basically a done-for-you customizable Biblical oils of ancient scripture workshop. And you can actually check out that replay on our YouTube channel about how she grows a faith-based oily community using these workshops. But there's a course here that teaches you that. And this is actually part of what we're going to be talking about here today is this page. If you go to Paula's page there, you can actually see what we'll be sharing with you today. So Paula, let's start. Like can, can you tell us first, have, have we, have we hit the one more or are we at 899 still?
Well, I'm waiting. I've got my phone silent, so I don't, I think we just have 899 at this point. I, my last count was 897 and then two more leads came in and I'm thinking, oh, almost 900, almost 900. But I think we're still at 899.
Okay, so let's see, maybe by the end of this call, what we're talking about you guys is leads. So these are people who have found a thing on Paula's website out in the world and have said, oh, I want to hear more from this Paula about one thing or another. And they put their name and their email in and those become people that Paula can eventually share Young Living with. Now that's 899 people. How many of you guys, maybe just a quick show of hands? How many of you guys would love to have 899 more people to share Young Living with? Who would, right? Right? Wouldn't that be a blessing for your business? So, so Paula, tell us a little bit about what, what brought us here? Because you don't have a background in web design or, or you know, lead generation on the internet, right?
Right, yeah. It was just a trial and error thing for me and it really was basically, I started thinking about the things that I have thoroughly enjoyed myself over the years. And I, and I came up with a couple of lead magnets that are not connected to oils at all, but have gone viral. And, and so then I had to figure out how to get a system to, you know, respond to those people in a personal way that would connect with them.
That's incredible. And so you've actually put together, and like we mentioned, Paula creates courses and resources for the Get Oiling community. So, so there is a course we're going to be talking about here today that actually outlines the whole process. But I, I kind of just want to give this over to you. I'd love to sort of hear, you know, the story of this lead magnet and then of course, what you've created. Because obviously everybody here would love to recreate the success that you've had. Because it's not just about getting the people, right? Like once those 899 people show up, you gotta do something with them, right?
They gotta do something with them and you've got to connect with them and you've got to build their, you know, trust and, and a relationship to, to reach out to these people. So it is, it is a learning process and there's a curve to it. But I, I've, since I've gotten up to 899, I've had lots of practice. And so that's what I'm sharing, the system that I use that is working well for me.
I love it. So let's get into it then.
Okay, so let me start off with a question, Ashley. Ashley, what do you do when your lead magnets go viral? Well, you come up with an effective and doable plan. You come up with a system where you can easily respond to a whole lot of new leads. So no one falls through the cracks. You come up with a system that feels natural and sincere, where you'll be talking about things that the two of you have in common. So in this course that I've put together, basically for myself and then thought, well, you know, other brand partners can use this too. I'm going to show you, I'm going to show you the process that I actually went through to arrive at a quick and easy way to send out 35 to 70 or more new messages every single day in a way that will catch the attention of my new leads. Because I will be talking about the things that they told me they were interested in. So in this course, I'm going to show you how I came up with not only one, but two lead magnets that had gone viral. And like I said earlier, when I checked the numbers, it was 897. And then my text message went ding ding, two more times. So we're at 899. Now, these are people that I don't know. These are people who found my Get Oiling website on the internet. And then I'm going to show you how to uncover the interests of your new leads, what they and you are both interested in outside of the topic of that awesome thing that you're offering to them on your landing page. The thing that made them stop and fill out your form in the first place. So it wasn't, had about 250 new leads that I really began brainstorming how I might introduce the natural living lifestyle to these people. I knew that they needed the oils and I knew that they needed the oil infused products. In fact, I felt a little guilty because I had all these leads coming in. I mean, what a blessing that is. And I didn't know what to do with these people. I knew they needed the oils, but I just didn't know how to respond to all of them without, you know, a bunch of them falling through the cracks. Okay, so, um, I knew they needed the oils. You and I both know that everyone needs the oils. So my passion is to reach these people with the natural living lifestyles, you know, specifically Young Living. Okay, so my two lead magnets are free clergy stall pattern and a free knitting machine pattern. And you're probably scratching your head about now thinking, how in the world is that going to connect these people to the natural living lifestyle? Well, that's the beauty of it. I mean, think about it. These are mostly people you don't, that don't have oils. These are your people who don't have Young Living oils. But you and they have something in common. So that's your starting point. So, um, what does the system look like? It's duplicatable, it's doable, and it allows you to easily send out lots of personalized messages each day in probably less than an hour a day. Earlier, on an earlier video, I said one to two hours. But that's if you're actually going in and tweaking the messages and doing some other stuff too. I'd say probably an hour a day, you could get 50 messages out and also, you know, organize your leads that have come in. And you're not just sending out any old messages to these folks. I mean, you could do that with a campaign. Campaigns are, are good thing. They are wonderful for most of your follow-up with people who know you, like, you know, on your team or, or when a friend is opting into a seven-day spring cleaning challenge. But cold market leads are different. You need to get to know them first. You need to build a relationship with them. So this system allows you to send personalized messages that you can adjust along the way if necessary. Messages that your new friends are going to want to open and read and click on. Why will they want to open and read and click on your messages? Because they are addressing that person's particular interest. Now, some may opt out of your messages, but that will most likely be a small percentage. And when that happens with this system, you now have the opportunity to read and maybe tweak that message a little for the next person who will receive it. I mean, people opt out of messages for different reasons. Maybe they've got too many messages to read and not enough time. Or maybe it's just a matter of changing the wording a little and helping them to see that they do need and want what you're offering in that message. Helping them to see that, that you want to help them. So if I see a couple of people opt out after a particular message, I simply read through the message and normally shorten it a little and reword some of it. I've found that to be very effective for me. And then people don't continue to opt out after that message. So this is how it works. Let me share my screen. First, I'm going to show you a clergy stall blog that is connected to a Pinterest pin. That's the way this particular lead magnet went viral. I also have a second one that didn't go viral through a Pinterest pin, but actually through a couple of very large Facebook groups. Okay, so these are people in the clergy stall one, these are people who love to sew clergy stalls, like me. That's what we have in common. So let me go ahead and share my screen. Let's see if this share screen is going to work.
Just really quick, you guys, there was a question here from Lisa in the chat. Like, so if you, if you don't know what a lead magnet is, Paula's actually going to show you an example of what that looks like. But basically what a lead magnet is, is it's kind of what it sounds like. We want leads and then we want to attract magnets attract. So it's a thing that you use. So maybe a free thing that you give away. In this case, Paula's going to show you the clergy stall pattern that has been getting her tons of leads. But it doesn't have to be an oily thing. It's just something that you are offering up to people of like mind or like interest that allows them to opt in, get on your email list, get into your contact manager, and now you have somebody new that you could eventually share Young Living with. All right, please continue.
You do want those oily lead magnets on your webpage because once you've brought these new leads in that don't have oils, they want, you know, they're going to go through to your website and you want them to see all the other things too. And it's just kind of like a passive thing, showing them your interest there. So it's a good thing to have the oily lead magnets too. But you want another one or two that are going to go viral that aren't really connected to the oils. So that's sort of the secret there. But this is my blog area right here. And this particular pin, this particular blog post, I created the blog post first, then I created a Pinterest pin and I connected it to this blog. And so, I mean, I give them a lot of details here about how to make, I give them information about the church year and how to make a clergy stall. I actually have a little video in here on how to make the stall. And then I give them some, you know, very detailed instructions on how to put their stall together. And then it says, to receive my free rounded clergy stall pattern, click here. So when they click there, then they are taken to this screen right here. And let me just get this little thing out of the way here. And, and whenever they're ready to opt in, then they just say, I want the pattern. And now this is what pops up. I give them some information here. I'm actually sending these people to a vault. You don't have to put them in a vault for this system to work. In fact, you probably won't be putting them in a vault. But they do all have the, the survey here. And so these are different things that I'm interested in right here. And so I asked them to go ahead and tell me what they're interested in as well. And so Greg hopefully is working on a system, working on this to, to help them go ahead and, and, you know, be tagged for this. That's what I want Greg to do. That's on my wishlist. Anyway, so they click what they want there. And let me just show you what happens. Let me put my information in and we will just see what happens after this. I said, okay, I'm, I am interested in aromatherapy, emotions and essential oils and, you know, these other items here. And then thanks for the free pattern. And then it takes them to my confirmation page. Also on the confirmation page, I give them a little, you know, opportunity to go back and just take a look at my webpage right here. So, all right, so then let me stop share. So that's basically, that's the, the nuts and bolts of it, of how the system works. But let me tell you a little bit about what my day looks like. In the morning, I pull up my to-do list in my Get Oiling back office. And I normally send out between 35 and 70 messages a day that are personalized to the interest, you know, that they just checked, the interest of my new friends. And in the evening, I go over my additional leads, the ones that have come in through text messages. And I get them all ready and organized in my back office for the next day or for whenever those messages were supposed to go out. The system reminds you, it's, it gives you little reminders to tell you, hey, you need to send this aroma therapy information to Sally. And so, you know, you just go in there and you, and you pull up, you know, your message and, and you send it out. Okay, then I check my email inbox for any lead messages I may need to respond to. Because if they're responding to my messages, I need to respond back in a more personal way. And that's when it gets exciting. Because you are now starting up a conversation with them. You're building trust with them and you're getting to know them. So I might add something like, you know, I can't wait to see all the beautiful clergy stall, stalls that you make using my pattern. So make sure that you send me a photo when you get them ready. Okay, so now I'm building trust with my new friends who will eventually come to see the benefits of something else that I love, like the toxin-free lifestyle that Young Living offers. It is a process though. You'll have to build those relationships first. And, but you're helping people and they will appreciate that. So who will they turn to when they are ready to get started with Young Living? You, of course. It's a win-win, you know, for both of you. Your friend base will grow, your team will grow and your new friends will reap the benefits of the Young Living oils and products. And soon they will want to be sharing them with others as well. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. Maybe there's some questions.
Yeah, so let's just recap that real quick, just to, to kind of give you guys the journey. So somebody is Googling. They want to make, in this case for Paula, they want to make a clergy stall. And, and they, they need a pattern to do it. So they're probably Googling clergy stall pattern. They're, they're very likely Googling that. And now in a lot of cases, Paula, they're winding up stumbling upon a pin on Pinterest that you made, right?
Yeah, that one did go viral with the Pinterest pin. People, I put it on a Pinterest pin. I did a little ad, you know, for maybe $10. I may have run it once or maybe twice. And then they started pinning my free clergy stall, stall opportunity to, to their other pages. And then it just, just kind of multiplied and it went viral. And people were coming to my page and reading the blog and clicking on the, the link that took them to the landing page and opting in.
So from there, so people are finding this pin that has been pinned by others because it went viral, because they were like, ooh, I need to make that. I want to remember that. So they pinned it. Now, when people click on that pin, they go to that blog post that you showed us on your Get Oiling site, right?
Exactly, yes.
And then from that Get Oiling blog post, they see there's instructions, there's a video, it's really nice content. But then you're like, hey, would you like the pattern? I'll give it to you for free. All you have to do is fill out this form. So they click and then they go to a page in Get Oiling where they felt, they put in their name, they put in their contact information. And then they can check off, because Paula put a list there of what the, and we know that these are oily things, they don't know these are oily things. These things that are oily, that can be oiled are on the list there. What, what other things are you interested in? So when somebody comes in, now you can start a new conversation with that person about that thing that they are also interested in, right? Not just the thing they signed up for, because they're here for a clergy stall. Doesn't directly have anything to do with oils, right? But it's, it's conversation opener. Now, Paula, in your case, you actually have that clergy stall pattern inside of a larger sort of lead-serving community in a vault in Get Oiling, right?
I do. You don't have to put it in a vault, but that, that is the way I started it out. Because I have both the clergy stall pattern and then the knitting machine pattern. They're both in that, that community. It's called the Sewing and Knitting Hub. And then I have other videos that, that show them more about how to make the clergy stall. And I show them videos for the knitting machines. And so it's just kind of like a combination place where I can put everything. And the people can go in there and they can look at what they want and they can, you know, talk back and forth. They can share their pictures of their clergy stall there or the sweater they knitted or whatever. So it works.
That's so exciting. So you're actually building a community in that way. But instead of sending them to say like a free group on Facebook, you're sending them to a vault where, that you can see what they're opening, what they're clicking, what videos they watch, you know, what lessons, you know, what have they completed? So you've got that information. And, and then basically what you're doing, and this is what you have figured out, right? Because there was a question here from Jenny in the Q and A about, you know, how many of these folks have become customers? So this, this actual, this virality is, is a fairly recent thing for you, right? Like, how did this thing take off?
Yes, it's, it's just taken off really quick. And I am building relationships. I've, I've just brought in one new, uh, young living person last, I don't know, a few days ago. And then I've, you know, got conversations going with the others. But it is, I mean, I'm not going to lie. It is, it's a process. You've got to build trust with these people. They don't know who you are on the internet. And, you know, we don't always trust people on the internet. So you really have to build that relationship with them first. And, but it is, it's a lot of fun actually, when they start to respond back and you can start a conversation and they're saying, hey, you know, I'm making this stall for my priest and this is, you know, this is what he wants or this is what she wants. And, and it's a lot of fun. It's really fun.
That is so cool. So, so basically what you're doing, and that's the, the whole purpose of all of this, is to build a bigger warm market, right? And so somebody that you, you, you guys have probably heard the dating analogy, right? Like you don't, you don't go and propose to somebody. You walk into a restaurant, you see somebody attractive. You walk up to them, pop a ring, right? Like you can get to know somebody before you try to, you know, take that leap. And it's going to be the case in your relationships with people, you're a stranger on the internet. Okay, so you have a clergy stall pattern. It's going to take a little bit of time to get them to the point where Paula's my friend. My friend wants to share oils with me, right? So Paula, you have a system in place and this is where, and I think, well, obviously, Paula is selling this information. We're not going to get too deep into the details here. But Paula's worked out some really brilliant time-saving sort of, it's, it's just a time-saving system, right? So these people come in and you have in your Get Oiling system, which sends you an email every day of here's what you want to do today. There's a to-do list, contacts you may need to reach out to, stuff to do. You've got that all figured out for you. So you don't even have to think about this. So a new lead comes in, you don't have to think about anything until your system says, Paula, today, you need to do these 30 things, right?
Exactly. And when you have 899 leads coming in, you forget what you've sent to who. You know, you need, you've got to have a system. Otherwise you're, you're just going to go a little bit crazy, you know? Because you can't, you just can't follow up with all of them properly unless you have a system in place. And so that's what I've, I've created here.
That's amazing. Yeah, most of us don't even have that many friends on Facebook, right? Like imagine trying to keep up with conversations with that many people. And so that's, you know, it's what using the contact manager is all about. But could you maybe, I don't know, give us just a little bit of, of an idea of what a conversational transition might look like for, just in your case, right? You got, you got a clergy stall pattern and you're kind of reaching out and touching and inviting and, and doing, like what are the kind of things that you are doing in that process between this person got the clergy stall pattern, they're a total stranger, to, you know, you eventually sharing Young Living with them? Maybe the, the person that you have just signed up recently, what did that journey sort of look like generally?
Okay, so what I, what I've found to be very helpful is to go ahead and share my story. Because a lot of these people with the clergy stall pattern are also clergy because they want to make their own stall, because stalls cost about $350 a stall. So they want to make their own and they need five of them. And so I would tell, I will tell them my, my story as, as a clergy person, how I started making stalls. You know, it was basically on my day off and I just needed something to become like a count on take me away moment to take me away from the work that I did all throughout the week and to just give me like a Sabbath, Sabbath day rest type of thing. And so I tell them about that and, and I talk a little bit about, you know, how clergy a lot of times feel lonely and exhausted. And this has been really helpful to me. And then I also will reach out and I'll say, you know, and there's some other things that I've also incorporated in my Sabbath day that have helped as well. And that's when I will bring in, you know, maybe the oils with emotions and, and things like that. And so, you know, everybody's going to be different. You know, everybody has different things they're interested in other than oils. I know we love oils, but there are other things in our lives that we're interested in as well. So you've got to find that perfect thing that, that you don't see like millions of people offering on the internet to, to build up that lead magnet that's going to go viral. So I don't know. Did that help?
Yeah, 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 absolutely. So here's a really good question from Chris Shonda. Does the vault include anything oily? So the actual vault that you're putting them into with the hub?
Yes, it does. I actually have put, I've got like 10 messages that I send out, depending on what they click. So if they didn't click all those messages, those 10, that information for all of those 10 interests that were on that survey, I also have in my vault. So I mean, they can look at it if they want to. And some of them do and some of them don't, but it's totally their option.
Yeah, at the end of the day, it ultimately comes down to, and this is the truth in your business, is it's a numbers game, right? I mean, it's not that, you know, your people don't, like people in your life don't have value, they are numbers. But, you know, only a certain number of people that you meet in your life will be like a close-knit part of your life. Only a certain number of those people are going to say yes to Young Living. And so it's just a matter of increasing the numbers of each pool so that the end result has the, the, the volume of, of people that you needed it, right? And so when you have these lead magnets, you've got this opportunity for just a whole lot more people that would not have ever heard anything from you otherwise, to have this opportunity to be one of those people that, that, that becomes that eventual customer. So let's see, does that, does this chat conversation, no, Elizabeth does not show up in the replay. If they check a bunch of topics, question from Amanda who always has really good questions. They check a bunch of topics. How do you send it to them? Do you send it all at once or do you spread it out? Do you spread it out? Like, you know, how do you pick which to send first? So how are you doing that right now?
I tell you how I do it and I know I don't send it all at once. I don't want to overwhelm them. You can, you know, set the, the time difference between the, the, the messages that you send out in the system. You can decide. I'll tell you how I do it. You can make your decision and how you want to do it. But no, you don't want to send them 10 messages all at once.
Right, yeah.
I know. Yeah, you want to spread them out.
Definitely. And, and to be fair as well, for, for someone who's just getting started, you know, virality of something is not, you know, it's, it's not guaranteed here, right? We're not guaranteeing that, you know, you're going to make a thing that's going to go viral. But Paula's has. And the interesting thing about Paula's and, and why I love this story so much is that obviously she created something that's very close to her heart, right? It's, it's, it's something that is a part of her life as much as oils are a part of her life, but it's not an oily thing. And, and it's something that is interesting enough that people want. And so what, what's resulted from this? And, you know, sort of the scarcity of this resource existing, and now Paula's really being the one that people are finding, is that she's, you're getting what, three to four brand new people opting in to get that clergy stall pattern every- is that she's, you're getting what, three to four brand new people opting in to get that clergy stall pattern every day, right?
Every day. And yeah, sometimes it's more than that because I've got now the knitting machine pattern people coming in too. Which that's kind of a rarity as well.
That's amazing. Yeah. So so just guys, let that kind of get the juices flowing for you. There are things that you're really into. Think about like what you wish that you would have known back in your previous you. And and take that to this information that Paula's gonna be sharing with you guys in this course because she outlines step by step and a lot of the stuff is done for you. And done for you, I might add gorgeously, like you guys, we're gonna go and brag on you here in just a minute and show everybody is the all the beautiful stuff that you've put together that you sell to the good oiling community. But 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 I wanted, just getting back to the virality piece here and just kind of what this looks like for you on a day-to-day basis. So Paula has three to four new people coming in every single day, sometimes more. Now, right now, and this may be changing soon, wink wink. Right now, we don't have automations attached to the boxes that folks check. That may be changing soon. And they may be very soon. So anyway, so so basically, when you're first launching a lead magnet and you're getting sort of the the content out there. So so you've got your lead magnet, right? The lead magnet is literally the thing that's on the other side of the landing page, which is where you get their information, right? For them to get to that thing. We need to have content out in the world. So what Paula did was she created content on Pinterest and she has blog posts, right? And so when people find the content, they then see, oh, there's a thing I could get. I want to opt in for it. Then they become the lead, right? Now, Paula gets three to four every day. And that's amazing, right? When you first get started, it's gonna be a trickle. It'll it'll be a slow trickle at first, very likely, unless you're being really active and promoting it on social media. It might respond, like the number of leads you get may be in direct response to how active you are in promoting this thing.
And actually, I tell, I tell you in the course what to do with those previous lead magnets. There are good lead magnets, but maybe they didn't go viral. So you can use those now in this system to follow up with your people. I mean, you can use those for maybe one of the interest things. You can change your survey to whatever your specialty is. So you can use those previous lead magnets. That's what I did. And then when you find that golden one that goes viral, then you know, that's that's just the the best thing in the world.
Amazing, amazing. So so basically what this looks like, the way that you manage it. Now Paula has mentioned here in about an hour a day. And this is, you know, she's not just following up once with folks who who sign up for the lead magnet. There's there's a strategy here that she teaches where it's over a period of time and specific things that you're coming in and asking questions about. You know, you're asking questions and expecting a response, like you're just starting a conversation with somebody. And some will and some won't respond, right? Some opt out and just wanted to get that free thing and be on their way. But what this looks like for you to manage, once you have something like this up and running, takes very, very, very little time out of your day. And I think that's like one of the most important things to know about this is that it is a very passive thing that can, of course, bring more activity to you, right, in the form of great leads. But but the actual way that you manage this on a day-to-day basis is it's very simple. It's very step-by-step. It's very systematized. So we've got folks who are like really wanting to hear more about this course. So Paula, can we? Let's talk about this. Do you want to, I, we can maybe screen share and show how people can get to it?
Oh, okay. All right. Let me see. Let me go ahead and open that one up. Hang on one second. Let me kind of type in here.
And remember, you can always find all of Paula's amazing stuff right on our get oiling website. It it's on the marketplace page, so good oiling dot com forward slash marketplace. You'll also find, we interviewed Dr. Linda a couple of weeks ago, it was amazing Zito course there. And there's a few other courses and our content partners are all there on that same page. So really looking forward to showing and telling your stuff. How many of you guys, maybe just a quick show of hands? How many of you guys actually have gotten some lead magnets or homepage templates or the oils of ancient scripture course from Paula? How many of you guys have used her stuff? I know there's a lot of us here. Paula makes really, really beautiful pages. It's a good name.
Okay, all right. Can you hear me? Did, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, this is where the course is, is you just type in beautiful-pages.com. And these are all my courses on here. You can grab your, let's see, your freebie right here. I've got a simple homepage template. You can grab right here. If you don't have good oiling yet, you can use my little referral link there. So this is how you join the community. And in the community, I'm gonna, you know, I've got some trainings in there. I've got some planned for this course as well. To give you more information. And then these are my courses. This is my first one, which is a custom homepage with three lead funnels course. My second one is beautiful additions. This one has like eleven more lead magnets in it. This is a coaching course, if you want, you know, to maybe some personalized one-on-one coaching. And then this is the lead magnet. Of course, that we were talking about today. So you just click right here and it'll take you to this little page and you know, if you've exhausted your warm market list of friends and don't know who else to reach out to, or if you've sent out bukus of emails and texts, but no one's opening your messages. Or if you have cold and warm market leads coming in, you don't know how to connect with them, well, then this is for you. So there's a little video right there and then you can just, let's see. These are the things that you will, you know, get in the course, my secrets to creating a good boiling lead magnet that will go viral. You can read through these. I don't need to read them for you. And then a little information about me and you just say, let's do this. And when you do, it'll take you to, I'm not sure if I've got this set up right. Oh, good. Where you can sign up. And there is a coupon code that you can put in here today and it's called, let me see. Funnel talk, F U N N E L talk. And when you do that, then you're going to get your twenty dollars off right there. So that's it.
Fabulous. And you mentioned, and I think we should reiterate this, you have a Facebook group where anyone who is a part of this community can join. So it's not just for folks who have purchased from you. So there is a great supportive group there. And here, let's pop that link in the chat here as well, if I can scroll up and find it. Slack thread is live today.
Glad you have it, Ashley, because I don't.
All right. So there's, there's a question here about how your, about your oils of ancient scripture, your biblical oils class. How it might compare to Aaron Rodgers. So I definitely would love for you to speak on that if if you are aware at all of what's in that. But I think a really important thing for you guys to know is that the way that Paula has that setup is specifically so that you can utilize your good oiling system to create leverage in how you promote it so that, you know, because teaching classes and workshops are really time-consuming. And Paula's isn't just the material. It is how to do it, right?
Right. I know I haven't taken Aaron Rodgers' course. I'm sure it's a wonderful course. I think she does use the Dr. Stewart's book as well, which this course also uses that book. But what you're doing is in in the the first course, there's actually two courses in there. So I actually have six if you count the second one. But the first course, you're actually set, you're setting up to do an in-person workshop, you know, in somebody's home or in the community or in the church. You're actually going to be doing a a in-person, you know, class or workshop. And then you can take what you've learned in that first course and you can grab the second course and then you can put it on your website as a as a, an online biblical oils course. So that's basically the difference. It does have, I mean, it is packed, packed, packed full of information. It's maybe kind of a little overload on information. But it's it's all on there. And the people that have gone through this course have really enjoyed it and and are using it. You know, for their biblical oils classes and stuff. And also, you know, they've got, they've got some that are using it to put it on their webpage as well as an an internet, you know, remote class.
Excellent, excellent. All right. So guys, if you have questions, please try to make sure you get them into the Q and A so that we don't miss any of them. We do see if you want to scroll through the chat. If you're here live, we've got folks who have used some of Paula's resources, taken some of her courses, if you want to see some feedback there. Amanda asks, okay, we've already gotten that one. If you check a bunch of topics, do you send them? Oh, do you, do you save replies when you, like, so somebody checks like a, you know, I'm interested in this. Like, do you have a saved reply for that that you send out?
I do. And I give you ten of my saved replies. Of course, you're gonna have to tweak them and and, you know, put it in your own wording, or maybe it's a totally different subject that you're covering. But I, the system is there, so you can change it and you can plug it in. And yeah, it is through save replies because you want to be able to personalize these messages. Campaigns are wonderful, you know, for like maybe a seven-day spring cleaning challenge or something like that. But but whenever you're talking to new leads, you really need to personalize it. That's the key. So that, because they don't know you, they need to build that trust first. So that's what the personalized messages do.
I love it. And it's it's such a smart approach. I can't agree with you more. When somebody first meets you, first impressions are everything. And so if you just send them something that sounds like it was written for everyone else and sent to twenty thousand other people, you know, what what incentive do they have to hit reply and talk to you, right?
Right. And if you're carrying on a conversation in your, you know, email inbox, then you know, when you get ready to send that person another message, you can, you know, you can actually personalize your your follow-up message, you know, with them for their particular, whatever your conversation was about in your inbox.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. So just to reiterate you guys, that is, it's the four-point-oh course on beautiful-pages.com. And if you use the code funnel talk, you'll get twenty dollars off.
Yes.
Fabulous. And we got your Facebook group, Purpose Driven Oily Life in our chat. We'll make sure all of this information is included in the description for our replay. Paula, is there anything else you want to add or share here? I'm so glad that you came out to share this with us. I think this is such an amazing story. I'm so glad that you've been blessed with this volume of leads and we're just so excited for your success.
It's been a lot of fun, Ashley. Thank you for having me on. And I I think we covered most of it. So I just appreciate y'all. And I'm so happy that I have the get oiling website. I mean, I don't, it's, I don't know what I'd do without it. You know, honestly, it's it's really a wonderful, wonderful webpage platform. And of course, you know, we've got people like Greg and Amanda and Colin and everyone that that he looks at our wishlist and and adds extra stuff on there for us when we need it. So I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
It means the world to us. And and honestly, it's it's because folks like you are using this that Greg's able to pull out that magic wand and say, yeah, maybe we could do that. So we have, we have you to thank for for what this platform is today, every single one of you. And Paula, thank you so very much for sharing this. We do have a couple of questions in the Q and A and I would like to invite if that's one of you, I think it says anonymous attendee. I don't know if it's one person or if it's two. But I would like to get into an actual screen share and work with you guys here to help get that worked out. So if you have more questions then for Paula, please put those in the Q and A. If you have them for us, please do that as well. Again, that's beautiful-pages.com. Go over to the four-point-oh course. If you want to get the full scope, right? This is how to take a lead magnet you've already poured time into to make it work like Paula's has been working, how to promote that, maybe how to come up with a new one. And by the way, if you didn't hear what she said a little bit ago, she's got lead magnets for sale that are done for you that you get inside of, inside of different courses that she offers there. So if you just want to have something done that you don't have to think about, you know, she's got a lot of really great stuff there that you can dig into. It's beautiful-pages.com. And on the four-point-oh course, if you use the code funnel talk, all one word, you'll get twenty dollars off. So, okay, so it is two of us. Perfect. So all right, I'm gonna come over here and let's do a screen share. Bertha, I'm going to bring you out first. And let's talk. I'm not sure which of these questions was yours, but but let's let's figure this out together. Hi.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So is yours about the the event or is it about the landing page?
No, it's the event. I don't know if I
Okay.
Put the one about the landing page. But today's my main concern because I have a bingo class tonight. And I have been struggling to be able to, I said, I've been following your PDF. I I printed it out. I've listened to the video several times. And for some reason, what I'm getting when I self-register is it takes me to my dashboard instead of my confirmation, you know, saved reply. So somewhere there, I'm putting something in the wrong place.
Okay, okay. And in your, in your site, is this set up under your events manager or is this like a landing page?
Event.
Okay, so let's go look at, and what is it called?
Oh, my Lord. Where is it? Okay, here, I'm gonna have it opened. What's wrong with my cookie? Yeah, what's wrong with my cooking oil?
Okay, here, I'm gonna go ahead and open my share up here. Okay, perfect. So great. So we want to register. Okay, so it says that I'm registered, but you had created a confirmation page that you wanted it to redirect to? Okay.
Right.
So, okay, so let's
To contacts, settings, right? And and save replies.
Okay. So in this case, after registration, what you're gonna want to do, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong here, I haven't set it up like this before. But if you want to redirect to a confirmation page from an event registration, you're probably going to need to connect an automation. Greg, is that right?
Um, actually, I don't think the events can do that. You'd probably have to go a slightly different way because you can use automations, but you can you'd have to set up probably a custom page that has your event stuff on it. And then there's an automation that runs in the background that are its VPs, yes, when you fill out the form. If that makes sense. It's a little bit, little bit more complicated if you want to have something else. Otherwise, I think it just pops up as a thank you for registering or something like that.
You can kick off What we just saw.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. So so the confirmation page, does it have specific information on it that they need to see? Or is there any harm in them staying on the page right here?
No, it's gonna have the Zoom link, as you have said, you know, don't put the Zoom link on the very first.
Got you, got you. So in that case, it's, you're gonna want to put that in your campaign.
Okay, um, I didn't do it there. I went to contacts and campaigns. So on the campaign, it would give me a default campaign. And I did find these, go all the way down and found the no campaign. So I thought that would do it, but I'm, you're looking, showing me something I I haven't gone to.
Got you. Okay, yeah. So here, we'll go, going back to your events here.
Okay.
So here we go. What's wrong with my cooking oil? Great topic, by the way. All right. So we're gonna go to edit. And then, then, yeah, so you can connect a campaign to your events. And so this is, this is actually what I would recommend is is to have the camp, the the Zoom link, like the join link in this campaign that you're sending out, right?
So that should be shown as you drop down. It should be in there that I set it up. Correct. Okay, there it is.
Yeah, so it says bingo confirmation reply, but it doesn't appear that there is anything in that campaign. So let's, actually, before we go over there. Here, let's go ahead and grab the we'll grab the event link.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, how do we have this? Let me go back to edit here. Do you have a Zoom link set up for this? And where do you have it? Is it in your your Zoom meetings?
Correct, right. But I do have the link on the confirmation saved reply and and there's a bingo card link as well in there.
Got you. Okay, so we'll use that to create the campaign then. So what is the, which of these Zoom links were you planning to use?
It's not there. Okay, look at healthy. No, that's a different one.
It is a recurring link. It could, it could certainly work. Oh, here we go. Living Balance Bingo Health Series?
Yes, that one. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we're going to grab the link here. So copy the link. And then let's go over to, it's a bingo. And you do have bingo, there's a reminder, first reply after registration. So maybe you already have this.
Yes, yes, because generic, I made it generic because, yeah, this first one was for salt. And I thought, no, I'm gonna be doing a series. I need to do a generic that I can use each time, right?
Yes.
So first reply after registration, okay.
Perfect. So all we need to do then is just create a new message. And we're gonna grab that. Perfect. So all we need to do then is just create a new message and we're gonna grab that bingo.
First reply on the very top up there.
First reply. There we go. Yeah. All right. So
Yeah, there it is. That's it. Cooking oils. Correct. Is it? Okay.
Okay. So now, now when somebody registers on your page, they will see a little green box pop up like, like we saw for me. Uh, but then in their email, they're going to get the actual link.
So on text, they will get that email, uh, directly to that message? Not, okay. Can you run it real quick again, Ashley? Where you did the campaign?
Yeah. So you can actually see it, um, right over here in your events. Well, so the, the only thing that wasn't, uh, plugged up here was that we didn't have a message in your campaign. That was the only thing. Uh, so if we go back here and we go to edit our event.
Uh huh. Edit event.
Then if we come down here, you can actually see the campaign. And so if you click this little, this little guy right here, then you can edit the campaign. We just added this. There just wasn't a message here before.
Huh. Okay. Cause I, I, was that there already or did you change it? Because I had it on no campaign, I thought.
Uh, this is how I found it.
Okay. Well, maybe I, okay. And maybe it went out.
Well, I mean, there wasn't, there wasn't a message until just now in the campaign. So there was a campaign. It was just an empty one.
So now from here, since I had to manually copy, paste and send it out, shoot, I, I, I sent it out last night or yesterday in the afternoon. I know I'm doing this so short notice, but, um, I get replies. So I manually had set up a message and, and send it out to many people. And now they're responding, yes. So how do I now connect to without sending another first page invitation? Or should I just start, restart over?
Oh, since you've already, so what I would recommend that you do just in the future is once you've got your event fully set up and there's a campaign attached to it, go right here to share. Uh, you know, uh, and, and then you're gonna share the event link.
Okay.
Right? And that's this here, right? And you can, um, well, how do we, no, I'm sorry. You go to invite. I'm sorry. Don't go to share. Go to invite. Right? And that takes you to your contacts. And then from there, you can go and send them an email, right? You can invite all of these people to, to the event. Right? So we could say invite all right here, um, and, and then actually invite them. Just want to stay on that page and show people's contact info. But yeah, yeah, you, you click invite all or you filter your contacts.
Yeah, I remember you showing that. Uh huh. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Very good. I really, really appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Happy to help.
You so much. Love your hair that way.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Uh, Nancy, you also had a question about your, uh, your landing page for a vault. So let's, let's chat about that real quick.
So I've been following through the, um, how to move your teams off Facebook tutorial you did. And I, I got to the launch part, so I decided not to make any pages. Like you had a kind of shown the different groups that you can do with the pages. And I did not do any of those because I'm like, I was struggling with the pages and I'm like, I just wanted to get this launched. So, um, I skipped section 18 and I went to launching. But when I launch, I get to a place that says there's nothing in the member area. So today I started kind of regrowing, going through all the, the sections. And when I got to 18, I'm like, I'm just kind of struggling on how to make a page. Do I have a landing page? I sort of been communicating with Colin and he was asking about the landing page that I'm sending people to. And I'm just confused by it all.
Got you. Yeah. So having a landing page connected to your member serving vault just gives you an easier path to, you know, just saying, here's the link, sign yourself up if you want to. Uh, now, one thing that we haven't updated in that course, uh, that's newer on our platform is that you can use automations now. So what, what I think is one of the, the best things to do actually is to create an automation that adds them to the vault, sends them to a confirmation page maybe. And, uh, and to just send that out to everyone in your VO, uh, send that automation link out. So you send an email and you're like, hey, I'm someone who can help you. I have some resources. If you'd like them, just click here. And then it takes them over to the vault, right? And then they're, they've got access now and so on. Uh, but I still think that just as an easy thing for you to have, just so you can, you know, have it as a link that's saved in your bookmarks. Maybe you've just signed up a new customer. You want to go ahead and get them signed up. I think it's still a really useful thing, uh, for you to have. So, um, so you were saying that you're having trouble creating it and like connecting it to the vault?
Um, I'm just not, I'm not very practiced at setting up a page. So when I get into and it's asking me for columns or headers and I'm, I was like, I don't even know.
Yeah. So let's, yeah, let's make one. It's so crazy easy. Um, we're gonna start with a blank page here and, um, and we're gonna do one of these. This is exactly like the one that I use. So we're gonna replace this, uh, oops, want to replace this image here with, hit when my computer does this and it doesn't let me see. There we go. We're gonna browse. There we go. We're gonna add the photo you already made. Uh, we're gonna say, get our members only resources. Click the button below to get access now. And then of course you can add any other additional information you want to here. If you would like to maybe tell a little bit about you, right? Maybe a picture of you, swap this out, picture of you. You know, hi, I'm Nancy. And you share some stories here, that kind of thing. I'm gonna go ahead and get rid of this because we don't need that. Uh, but you know, have some of this here. And I want to change this button style because it's doing something a little strange with the color. Uh, but yeah, so say whatever you want to say here. Um, I'll show you an example real quick. This is Megan's, right? So get our exclusive member resources, sign up now, get instant access, yada, yada, right? Just real, real simple, real, real simple. But then you're gonna go into the settings and this would be member resources, sign up. And then we're gonna make this by link only. We don't want everybody to find this. We only want the people who have the link to use it. Right over here under leads, uh, we'll say, enter your name, ant name, email and YL member number below to get access to our members only resources. And share any other additional information here. If you plan on sending out a weekly or monthly email, set expectations, right? So you go back and change the words here, uh, name, email. I'll remove phone here. I don't think that that's necessary, but we'll say, uh, YL member number. And it is required. It's short text. In this case, uh, we'll use no campaign because your vault, your vault should have a campaign attached to it.
Okay.
We're going to add them to your vault. We're gonna tag them with young living member area, maybe also downline or something like that. Especially if you're going to have, uh, different types of leads in your system. And then we'll send them to a confirmation page and you've got a few of them. So you do that, save it.
Those are all in there. I didn't actually set up any.
So those would have come, those would have come from, um, Grow Workspace, probably. If you, if you have Grow Workspace and you claim some bundles from them.
Yes.
It's probably that. So if we go over here and I click learn more, let me refresh this. There we go. So they enter name, email, member number, and this should add them, uh, to the vault. And it'll take them, where they'll go first is to a confirmation page. And then they're gonna get whatever that email is that's attached to your vault. Uh, and then, um, and then they'll be able to, to get access.
So when the email goes out, it says, welcome to my vault, but there's no vault name there.
Right. So, um, if you receive it and it looks like that, it could be that you didn't send it from the vault. Uh, so here's, here's what you want to make sure that you do. So let's go look at our vault real quick. Uh, and see what email we have connected. Okay, welcome to our pathway to wellness. And this is going to say my vault, pathway to wellness, because that's the name of it, right? This is all good. This is all, this is what they'll receive. So this will actually say pathway to wellness. If somebody receives it because they opted in to the vault, because they were added to the vault. If you just sent a vault campaign to somebody and it's like the, it was not related to the vault, then that information is not actually going to show up. So here, I'll, I'll show you real quick.
Cause I did send it to a friend of mine and she did get the confirmation email, but that was blank. And then when she went to get into the vault, it said, there's nothing in the member area.
Got you. So it could be, so what you would have needed to do is, like, did you add her contact to the vault?
No, I don't know. I just followed the tutorial. If it told me to do it, I did it. If not, I didn't.
Okay. Yeah. The, the final step is you're either going to manually add that contact to the vault. Or, uh, you're going to give them this landing page and they can add themselves. So I'm, I'm waiting on the email to arrive, but I will walk through it and I'll show you what I get, uh, once, once that shows up. But yeah, um, the reason why that wouldn't work out is, is probably just because, uh, there was no, um, they weren't actually added to the vault itself, uh, for the member area. And I did check this for you real quick. And your member area, it is enabled, um, right? So that's good to go. Uh, and then the vault is also, um, let's double check this. It is also enabled. So this should be set up just fine. If my email would like to respond just a little bit faster, I'd love to show you that this works with an email response. But, but no, it looks like you're good to go. Um, and we'll actually, we'll go pull up my contact here just to confirm. Here we go. I literally just got it. Okay. So it says, welcome to, uh, my vault, pathway to wellness. Here, let me swap my share. I'll show you exactly what this looks like. And you can see that it is working. So it does say pathway to wellness.
Good.
Right? It's all here. And so when I click here to enter, let me move my share over here and you'll actually see, and I am, I'm logged into your account. So, um, it is showing me, you know, it's taking me straight there.
Okay, awesome.
Your person, when they click that link, is going to come to a page where they need to set up a password for their member area.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's awesome. That's super helpful. Thank you so much. And I'm actually like, thank you for doing these because I've learned a lot.
Good, good. I'm so glad. That's why we do it. Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
All right. Fabulous. You guys, so many, so many good questions. Uh, we are thrilled to have you here again another week. Allison, yes, that was created from the move your groups off of Facebook. Yes, that, uh, get oiling.com forward slash move your groups. Okay, uh, you guys, uh, we are just a few minutes over. Thank you for sticking around. Uh, thank you for being an amazing part of this community. And, uh, thank you again so very much, Paula, uh, for joining us today, sharing your wisdom with us. You guys go to beautiful-pages.com, look for that 4.0 course and use funnel talk as a code to get access to our full system. So you can learn not just how to get a lead magnet, have it go viral, but how to make sure that every lead who comes into your good oiling system is followed up with in a way that can nurture them toward becoming your customers. Thank you again, Paula.
Thank you, Ashley. Appreciate you.
All right. We will see you guys back here next week, same time. Y'all have a great weekend. Bye.